I like it being on that TV better than the other one. Sam, can you hear us?
Yes, I can.
Sam, can you hear us?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes. All right, are we ready? Let's say this is the first meeting in five years, or actually it's the first meeting in five years that I've started late.
Go out with a bang.
All right, so it is 5:35, and we are going to call to order this regular meeting of the City of Glenrose City Council. At this time, I'll ask everyone to please rise for the invocation. Councilor Frank?
Yes, please pray with me.
Dear Heavenly Father, Lord, we thank you for the blessings of a new day. Lord, we thank you for salvation for those who believe. We ask that you continue to lead us, guide us, just like you direct the Pharaoh's heart, like a water stream. Lord, you guide our steps daily when we look to you. We ask that we would be about the business of the City of Glenrose in a right way, in an honorable way, something that brings blessings to you. We ask these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Good morning. Councilmember Conrad?
Here.
Councilmember Walker?
Here.
Can someone bring me the sign-in sheet, please? Each person who addresses the city council shall do so in an orderly manner. All wishing to speak must approach to the podium, state their name and address for the record. The comments from the public during the agenda items for the public hearings, as well as the agenda items for individual consideration, will be limited to three minutes per person. Your time cannot be given to another person, and you will only be allowed to speak once. At this time, let me remind everyone to please turn your cell phones off or on silent. Council members are reminded not to text or surf the Internet during the meeting. Thank you. Okay, we're going to move on to the citizen visitor comments. I have nobody signed up to speak. Is there anyone who would wish to make a comment on a non-agenda item? And then we're going to move on to announcements, presentations. Our first item is presentation by Josiah Gaines to consider a biblical response to unbiblical ordinances.
I'd like to thank all of the council members and the mayor for allowing me to take a little bit of time this evening to present this speech, and I pray that it'll be a blessing to all of you. According to News... ...might be fined when thousands dollars. That would be the situation if proposed ordinance 3121 had passed in West Lafayette, Indiana. Today, please consider with me what the Word of God says concerning how Christians should think about and respond to ordinances like this one. Todd Terrell, a California attorney and ACBC certified biblical counselor, summarized the objective of the ordinance in this way, quote, "So in short, the law would prohibit any unlicensed person from providing a service or counsel that helps a minor who might be struggling with homosexuality or transgender issues, and would prohibit counseling someone that such behaviors and lifestyles are wrong or must be repented of," end quote. Steve Fires, senior pastor at Faith Church in Lafayette, Indiana, says that this ordinance reads like Daniel chapter 3. This makes sense in light of Ecclesiastes 1 verse 9, which says, quote, "What has been is what will be, and what has been done is what will be done, and there is nothing new under the sun," end quote. In the third chapter of the Book of... What does the Word of God say about ordinances like 3121? 1 Corinthians 6, 9 through 10, shows that the sexually immoral, adulterous, and men who practice homosexuality will not inherit the kingdom of God. Showing a person that they are in sin, that they deserve the wrath of God, and that they need to repent is actually loving, because to do otherwise would be letting them go down the path of death. Jacob 19 through 20 says this, quote, "My brothers, if anyone among you wanders from the truth and someone brings him back, let him know that whoever brings back a sinner from his wandering will save his soul from death and will cover a multitude of sins," end quote. Ordinance 3121 sought to prohibit unlicensed people from counseling minors to repent from certain sexual sins. Therefore, the Word of God unveils that this ordinance was actually unloving. These people are under the wrath of God, so how can they be saved? John 3:16 says this, quote, "For God so loved the world that he gave his only son, that whoever believed..." ...saved from his just wrath and punishment. But how does this ordinance relate to us, given that it was in Indiana and that it did not pass? Is it realistic to think that this kind of ordinance could come to our area in the future? Yes, because 2 Timothy 3, 12 through 13, says, quote, "Indeed, all who desire to live a godly life in Christ Jesus will be persecuted, while evil people and impostors will go on from bad to worse, deceiving and being deceived," end quote. What does a biblical response to ordinances like 3121 look like? In the days of King Nebuchadnezzar, Shadrach, Meshach, and Abednego did not worship the golden image that the king had set up. When they were about to be cast into the burning fiery furnace, they trusted the Lord, knowing that he was able to deliver them from the furnace. Amazingly, that is what God did. Their trust in the Lord serves as an example to date of how to respond to unbiblical ordinances. 2 Timothy 2, 24 through 25, commands us to respond in this way, quote, "And the Lord's servant must not be puerilest, but kind to everyone, able to teach, patiently enduring evil, correcting his opponents with gentleness." I present to you some of what the Word of God says concerning how to view things such as ordinance 3121, and I pray that by God's grace, you know what a biblical response looks like. Thank you. Anyone have a question?
I commend you for standing up and doing this, telling us the Word of God, and showing us the truth in a public setting like this. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, let's move on to our next item, presentation of Texas Municipal League Institute Awards. Can't present your own award? Mayor Douglas has received from the Texas Municipal League, two awards. The Award of Excellence for fulfilling the required community education requirements of the Texas Municipal League Institute for five consecutive years. And then I'll let you... ...City of Glenrose for recognizing the importance of continuing education to the enhancement of local governance by investing in the training of your elected leaders with the Texas Municipal League Institute. I've always believed that education is our best tool in our arsenal to fight whatever's coming to us in the future, and I do hope that all future councils continue this legacy and continue the education so that we can best serve our citizens.
Congratulations.
Hopefully, that will be hung in City Hall, and we'll be there forever. All right, so let's move on to the next item. This is our public hearing regarding the Post-City of Glenrose Comprehensive Plan. I'm going to open this public hearing at 5:46. If we have anyone that would wish to make any comments, bring them up. Okay, there being no comments, then I'm going to close this public hearing at 5:46, and we're going to move on to item four, discussion, consideration, and possible action regarding the adoption of the City of Glenrose Comprehensive Plan. Abra?
And we had a comprehensive plan advisory committee that was appointed by city council. They met three times. We also had three community forums. One of them was a Zoom Town Hall, and it got great attendance. And then we had staff review of the comprehensive plan. We've adjourned it to P&amp;Z and city council, and it was forwarded on from there. It was posted for public review. We've made some very minor updates since it was posted, but got some great feedback on some relevancy and accuracy things, just kind of out there, maybe discrepancies. So we corrected all those, and we are here tonight for a plan adoption. It guides the city with a vision and also guides future development. It does have a 20, 15 to 20-year horizon, but there are short-term, mid-term, and long-term actions. It does relate to the strategic plan that you adopted, so it was one of your top 10 to your goals, is to finish the comp plan. Those are the elements of the comp plan. It has a triple bottom line, and it has a design thinking approach. The original comp plan was adopted in 2009, and so the city initiated this last year in 2022. So we extracted these and built the plan around these, and we had a lot of feedback. I won't go into this unless you're curious. And we had a project website, plangrtx.com. We aim to preserve the small-town charm and feel, which is the number-one strength, and we aim to fix some traffic and safety-related concerns on the mobility side, which was the number-one weakness. We had stakeholder interviews, and I'm going to go through this. Come on. So we do have a future land use map, which designates all existing neighborhoods as existing neighborhood. That's a preservation district. And then we have some new areas like waterfront, and neighborhood mixed use, and community mixed use, and downtown. Downtown is not just the square, so it's, we designated a larger area than that, just based on topography and major roads and whatnot. Blood plain, these are all the things. I can circle back to any of these that you want. This is our mobility framework. These are proposed roads and existing, so we've got the different classifications. You can see 67 running through, which is a major arterial, and that's text, owned, and maintained. And then we have some ...I did speak to Councilwoman Walker, and she did have a few changes. Do you want to go through those, or do you want me to?
It doesn't matter, since I know my shorthand if you want me to or you can't.
Yeah, just real quick, there's just kind of a little cleanup, pictures and stuff.
On page 140 of the, our pack, on page 129 of the comp plan, it said that it was the library, and it's actually, I mean, it said that it was Somerville Central Appraisal District, and there's a picture of the library. And on the next page, let me get, it says Somerville County Expo and Glenrose Medical Center, and it's a picture of Somerville County Appraisal District. Nothing big. In a couple places, it talked about Bo Gibbs Boulevard, and we spoke with Mr. Holder before the meeting, and it needs to be changed to Gibbs Boulevard. Maps all have Bo Gibbs, but the latest research and all that Mr. Holder did, it should be Gibbs. And then on page 150, in, I believe on Abra's, or our pack, let me see. Yes, on page 150 of ours, it says animal care and control operate...
...or whatnot. You can condition your approval with these, especially since they're non-substantive, just like cleanups. Anything further, Abra?
Great job, Abra.
Great. Thank you for your help and collaboration.
I have one quick question for you. One of the things that we really wanted to understand was engagement, community engagement, right? Because it's not our plan. Can you just speak to how that, how you felt the community engagement went, maybe comparable to other cities?
Yeah.
Should we, should can we confidently say this is the city's plans?
Yes. So we did a variety of methods. We did an online community survey. We had a 24/7 website up with activities and comment forum and all that. We kept it, people posted. We had three community forums. Two were in-person, and we got really meaningful feedback. And, you know, in a small city like Glenrose, you're not going to get thousands of people that come to those, but we got great attendance, and the people that came really provided some meaningful input, which was great. And then the Zoom Town Hall was kind of a different format and allowed a whole different crowd to participate and view those either live or on-demand, so that was really good, too. And then stakeholder interviews were really meaningful and productive. Conference of Plan Advisory Committee was very... ...experience, and I think the feedback's been great.
Thank you. That last one is on page 139 for you.
Okay, I've got the picture of your...
Well, I had 150 on there.
Okay, I'll find that.
That was our page. Just, I appreciate everyone's participation. We have folks across the board. I'm very, very thankful for everyone that did participate in whatever way they did. They keep it up. I second that.
So do I have a motion to adopt the City of Glenrose Comprehensive Plan, which we just discussed?
Will do.
I have a motion from Mayor Person Josiah. Go ahead, I'll second. I have a second from Councilmember Walker. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Five zero approved. Excellent. Congratulations on your new plan.
I do. Thank you so much, Abra.
You're welcome. Let's move on to recognition of outgoing and incoming mayor and council. The next item on the agenda is comments from outgoing mayor and mayor president. So first of all, on behalf of the City of Glenrose, I'd like to thank you for your service.
Present you with your very own street signs.
When will this be unsolved?
As soon as you hang it on the wall.
Be right over here.
It's your hallway.
Thank you very much.
Those are cool.
The education, the relationships that I've formed, the skills that I've obtained, they've all been invaluable to my future. I'm going to cry. I thought it'd be like, see you later, Monica. But I couldn't have done it without all of your support, standing behind me all of these years. So thank you for allowing me to serve you, and thank you all for supporting me, and all of us, as we went through the most difficult challenges that any council has ever been. So thank you.
Wow. I get to follow that. I pretty much, most of you guys weren't here last week or last meeting, so you're in luck. I already, I gave my farewell speech then, so. But, but I do want to reiterate something that the mayor said, and that's that, and that I forgot to say last time. And aside from the joy that I've had getting to serve with this brilliant council, it has made me better, and it's made me a better citizen as well. Our mayor is the council, and she's led us as the mayor for the last two years, and we've done a lot. We've really accomplished a lot, and we have our campaign promises on what we think needs to be fixed, and then there's a couple hundred other things that we realize when we get in here that actually really need to be fixed. And I think we've been incredibly successful in doing that, so. But anyway, like I said, I'll spare you guys of all the diatribe I had last, last... But anyway, like I said, I'll spare you guys of all the diatribe I had last month, but thank you very much. Love you guys. And I can't wait to see what you do in the next couple of years. Thank you.
I'm gonna turn on to the side. Let's move on to our next item. Item six, administer oaths of office to mayor and councilmembers.
Oh, Conrad. Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Richard Conrad.
I, Richard Conrad.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute.
That I will faithfully execute.
Duties of the office.
The duties.
Will raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Richard Conrad.
I, Richard Conrad.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute.
That I will faithfully execute.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of city councilmember.
Of city councilmember.
Of the City of Glen Rose.
Of the City of Glen Rose.
And will to the best of my ability.
And will to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution laws of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
And of the state.
And of the state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Move your hands. I, Larry Joe Bowles.
I, Larry Joe Bowles.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute.
That I will faithfully execute.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Mayor.
Of mayor.
Of the City of Glen Rose.
Of the City of Glen Rose.
And will to the best of my ability.
And will to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
And of the state.
And of the state.
So help me God.
Yes. I can hear you. I can't see you.
Yeah.
We can't see us either.
Yeah.
Sure can.
Your heart, dear, go ahead and-
All right. Next, next order of business is comments from the incoming mayor and councilmembers. And in my world, Councilman Conrad, again, with any comments you'd like to make.
Sure.
Oh, yes, she does. Go ahead.
So I didn't get to say this earlier, but I very much appreciate the mentorship and the partnership from our outgoing mayor and councilmembers. Last two years were a major learning curve. And so I appreciate the assistance and the partnership from those folks, as well as from the folks here. I'm very appreciative to get to sit up here and to get to sit with teammates who have a lot of different views and opinions and a lot of experience that I can learn from. And so I look forward to continuing to do that over the next two years. Thank you all. Thank you for the opportunity.
Councilman Conrad. Well, first and foremost, I just want to say it's an extreme honor to be sitting up here. You know, this is a wonderful feeling. Y'all have welcomed me with open arms. Through meetings and conversations, and lessons we've had. And I really look forward to the challenge. I look forward to, as you say, our outgoing individuals, they were very instrumental in my guidance in coming here. And I look forward to serving the citizens of Glen Rose and doing what I think is best for us as far as the city. Thank you.
Folks, if you thought I'd been here two years ago, you're wrong. I had no idea, but I'm very happy to be here. I would like to say that it's a great time to become a member of this city council. Comprehensive Plan, which I was a very small part of, was worked on by city leaders, planners, professional planners, and mostly the citizens of Glen Rose, and that's who we serve. So I've got a direct plan. I had to do very little, just follow it, and let it happen, as they say. I have a lot of gratitude to several people. The people I worked with on planning and zoning, Pam, Mr. Green, and the others that aren't here today, but they taught me a lot. Not enough to be mayor, but I'll learn as I go. To Chip and Julia, they've served this community for a long time. I expect going forward, they'll still be involved, and we hope so. They've done a great job. They did a lot of things in this city that needed to be done. Still got work to do. Got to make this plan work, and I believe we will. One final acknowledgement. But before I do that, we do have a special mention. I asked Stacy if I could do this. On the 17th, we have a Tunnel to Towers home that's going to be dedicated, in Glen Rose, Texas, to Corporal Patrick Myers. Details will be on the reporter website, Glen Rose Reporter. This gentleman had put his life on the line for us. He's moving to Glen Rose. My wife and I went out and saw his home. And on the 17th, we'll have a celebration for him at 11:00 a.m. on that Wednesday. So what we're gonna put out there in the community is welcome and encouraged to be there for this gentleman that gave most. And then my final acknowledgement is, two years ago, when I moved to Glen Rose, I was sitting on the couch with my wife, and we were talking and complaining, talking about politics, world, local, talking about current events, state of the world, our country, House Cowboys. Something to complain about. And she made this statement to me, and I'll quote it. She said, "Do we have a right to complain? Don't get up and do something about it." And we both said, "Probably don't." So I saw there was an opening on planning and zoning, and I was lucky enough to take a position and work and learn a lot about city, this city. Meet a lot of great people. This plan that we've got gives direction to the city. My wife has given direction to me, many things. So going forward, as mayor, I will follow God, Jesus Christ. I will listen to my wife. I will do everything at the best of my ability for the citizens of Glen Rose. And I'm open all the time. I have an email. I have a phone. Everyone's welcome. So with that, we'll continue with the meeting. If I'd like to leave now, we're getting down to the real business. My sister-in-law often leaves. Okay. We're gonna open discussion. Mayor Pro Town, councilmembers, open to hear anything you have. Anybody?
I make a motion that George Fries, Mayor Pro Town, since he hasn't been mayor before.
I have a motion.
Do I get taken?
Seconded by someone.
Taken by everybody?
We have a note on the motion. But George Fries as Mayor Pro Town.
Yeah, thank you.
Did you expect any judge? Was that an exception?
No way.
He's good with it.
I was like, "We didn't ask George if he'd do it." Welcome to being mayor pro town.
All that means is, when I'm at offlane golf, George is to slip over here.
Have we told you all about Conrad's thing in terms of social? So now the question is, does George and Rich need to change places? So George can be down there.
Would you like to slip to that, or next to me?
I like right here next to Kelly. He's jumping next to Kelly. But I'd be on the wrong side.
It's because I'm bad for missing it.
I wish for sweet methods over here in this area.
George, the man is always supposed to be on the right.
He's the man, Rich.
So next to me, you can move over here. Okay, next item on the agenda is court of adjustment, public hearing regarding the request for a variance from the City of Glen Rose Code of Ordinances, Article 3.10, sign, for the property located at 205 Southwest Bernard, commonly known as the Inn on the River, and for allowance to increase the maximum sign height to 10 feet. Anyone? Want to speak?
I don't have to say the card.
Well, that's all right.
Oh, this is a public hearing. Remember, Joe?
I tried, Pam. You asked me to.
You're on your next public hearing.
Do we have any discussion?
No, no. This is a public hearing.
The chair told you it was a buck board.
Get it.
And, uh, public hearing regarding the proposed ordinance permitting the City of Glen Rose Code of Ordinances, Chapter 14, Index A, Zoning Schedule of Uses, M notes. We'll close the public hearings. Move to individual items for consideration. For 11. Discussion and consideration of possible action regarding a request for variance from the City of Glen Rose Code of Ordinances, Article 3.10, signs for the property located at 205 Southwest Bernard, commonly known as the Inn on the River, will allow for a maximum sign height of 10 feet.
Hi, Pam Strider, owner of Inn on the River. I can't even talk now. We have a river. That's what matters. 205, that's what matters. We have had a sign that's been there for 35 years, and about a month ago, it blew over finally, in one of the last windstorms. And doing so and engaging a new sign, one of the things that we've always had a problem with, with the sign that's currently registered, is it's because of its setback per ordinances, the sign was actually being blocked from oncoming traffic by the Cypress Cedar, Juniper, whatever you want to call them. from oncoming traffic by the cypress, cedar, juniper, whatever you want to call them, trees, um, in the round circular, um, enters, um, and the brick stone wall that was, um, engaged by the Glen Hotel back in the, um, late nineties. It interrupted the view of our sign. So we are asking to help visibility, um, that our sign, instead of being a six-foot tall sign, that we can actually raise the legs another four feet, so that the sign itself will appear above the stone wall, and that ontra- coming traffic, coming from the square area, would be able to see the sign before they hit our driveway. Um, right now, a lot of people would see the sign after they pass our driveway, so we're just trying to be... At one point in time, uh, the PNC had worked on, before my time on the PNC, had worked on the sign ordinance to allow, um, for various obstructive views where, as I was going through, uh, the sign ordinance, we found that, um, what is actually currently on the books online isn't the sign. What has been passed. PNC is going to work on this eventually. It, it's actually on our workshops for next month. But in the meantime, to comply with all rules and regulations, I could get a sign up. The people complained me again. To allow our sign to go above the stone wall. Which, by the way, is less than the sign at the Glen Hotel. The Glen Hotel sign that is grandfathered in from years ago is about twenty feet, and every other sign that's on a roof line going around the square is obviously going to be taller than the sign.
Only question you, you nailed, my question was going to be about adjustments to the ordinance. Are you guys looking at adjusting it, again, looking through the lens of instruction? Or is there, are you potentially looking at it?
I'm actually going to go back to my notes from the original sign project and compare it to what's online, and first engage what we think is the core, and then look to see if there's anything else that needs to be...
I have one, some questions kind of in the same line. If you happen to recall from three years ago, do we know what the PNC was looking at or considering for a maximum height?
That was going to be dependent on the obstruction. So that, our, the thought process was, whatever the obstruction, and, and we were using a wide variety of things looking at it, such as express and, and comfort end, that because they're down in the valley, their sign needs to be taller so you can be seen from the hill, so as you're coming down the hill, you knew that they were ahead of you. So there's a wide variety of things, um, that we had discussed during those meetings. I was a participant in the fine ordinance, although I wasn't on the commission at the time.
This doesn't change anything else about the square footage of the allowable sign, only the...
The sign itself will be six foot wide, four feet tall, um, it has, it will be a two pole, um, and it will be about, okay, it's only eight inches wide, because we're going to have some light. But the lights are complying with night sky ordinances.
Is the, the, so we take this step, and then the next step is to present the sign, kind of like the finish?
We are just your preservation.
Okay, so you're already...
So you could, the preservation approved the sign and approved the variance if you guys gave the...
Other question here. If it's a maximum height of ten feet, and you're saying it's a four-foot tall sign, that means it can be at the bottom height, it's only going to be six feet?
Correct.
Or we're going to have, uh, if you lose people, if we have a, a Mr. Flippin going through and banging his head, are we going to have any issues with, with taking it?
It's, it's in our front yard itself, and the sign before was four feet off the ground. So if somebody wants to walk into it, it's on me, I'm going to be pursuing.
I'll just...
And all this going on stupid. They're going to have to walk really, really hard. So the sign placement is going back exactly where the, the old sign used to be. We're just, and so it's fourteen feet off the sidewalk, it's ten feet off the...
Second? All in favor? Five zero, passes.
Well, thank you, ma'am.
Next item, number twelve, discussion, consideration, and possible action regarding, regarding an ordinance permitting the City of Glen Rose Code of Ordinances, Chapter Fourteen, Appendix A, zoning scheduling of uses and notes.
Can I get a short version?
Hi, read your book. Um, so we had, really clearly, this was a, an oversight on our part, on all of us. As we were going through this charge and going through this charge, none of us realized that we were missing something. Um, and so in the recommendation that PNC put together for you, we put a very lengthy explanation. Um, if you guys have any questions, I'm happy to answer it, but I'm assuming you've read all that, so I just imagine that there's a... Else I could say to help you.
Can you tell us what Hartfordshire, what is that?
Hartfordshire is the, um, it's Fuzzy's old house.
Okay.
Yeah, I had to ask that one, did I?
Yeah, no, it's, it's, we all know it's fuzzy, so...
Okay, so bed and breakfast that they're trying to put in over there, that we've already told them, no.
Wait, which one?
That's a short-term rental.
That's a short-term rental, that's different.
I mean, short-term rental.
That's not, this doesn't apply, this does not apply to that.
Okay. And then my second question on the twelve thou- or eleven thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine square feet, how did y'all come up with that? Because I'm just, I did some research of my own, and like Aldi gives the twelve thousand square foot footprint, which is something that small cities look for, that type of stuff.
Right.
We, the thing is, we want to bring in smaller businesses.
Right.
But we don't want to run out the ones that are wanting to come, because we've got it so tightly booked that the small businesses can't come in.
So that was a big discussion. Um, so originally, so this is, this is where it originally stood. Anything over three thousand square feet required an S U P. Um, and again, that's too small.
It's way, it's smaller than a half.
So we, we stepped back. So we stepped back, and I'm going to tell you, there was probably an hour-long discussion on this. Um, we stepped it back and said, "Okay, well, let's look at twenty-nine nine nine nine." Um, and then started talking about that more, and we actually moved on to other subjects, and we came back to this, because I said, "Wait a minute, at twenty-nine nine nine nine, that, that is everything." That, that's just about it, other than a Walmart or anything else. So where do we really want? And it's not so much that we want an S U P to say yes or no, it, it was more about a knowledge base. Of, we all have gotten questioned about things that we're not aware of, because there isn't a process to put it in front of city council or PNC. So we went back and forth and back and forth, and, and a lot of it, you know, we used a couple of different examples of stores, um, to kind of help us guide what we would say yes to and what we would say no to. And I'm going to admit it, the family dollar that has been in front of city council a lot, for various different reasons. Oh, no, it's not. They fall under the twelve nine nine nine. And so, but we use that as kind of a guide, and then we looked around at the lots. We literally were pulling lot sizes out of fifty-seven and saying, "Okay, what really can fit here? And what can do this, and what can do that?" You know, one of the things I, I brought up is, okay, if John ever sells Red Barn, his lot is big. You know, yes, there's something there now. Nobody's going to keep that building. You know, somebody is going to knock, when that, when that thing sells, somebody's going to knock it down, and somebody's going to want to build something on it. And so, do we want to know about it? Do we want to have some type of a say on taking that prime real estate up? And that's where we kind of said, so based on how we divided parking, those, those divisions, zero to four, zero three nine nine nine, four thousand to twelve nine nine nine, thirteen thousand to twenty-nine nine nine nine, and then thirty thousand above. That's where we landed on, is that tall nine nine nine, that mid-range. Anything that's twelve nine nine and under is right in that target of what we're looking for to bring into this town.
Just, just for...
This is eleven nine nine nine. Yeah, oh, that was the, it's supposed to be twelve?
No. Eleven?
Whatever is on the parking thing, that's what we were saying.
Eleven nine nine.
Is that what it was? Okay, I'm sorry, I misspoke.
Okay.
Eleven nine nine nine. So that's where we did it.
Could we, could we do a variance, and I, and I know this is where, I don't know what we can't, can't do. Could we do a variance instead of an S U P? Because I recognize, nobody's going to come in and build seven thousand foot structure on an S U P, right? Because then it can yank, so I get that. Could we do a variance? Meaning, you get the permanent approval to exceed whatever the amount is.
I would prefer to do a variance, because like I said, Aldis start out at twelve thousand square feet. That's their, that's their footprint. Uh, I know we don't really want a neighborhood market, but at the grocery store, and it's, uh, footprint is thirty-eight thousand.
Well, if we do a variance, I would certainly, and I know this, we're going to disagree, I would prefer to go a little bit smaller if we have the liberty to create variances for a business that we, that would meet the needs of our citizens.
Like, a little smaller than eleven nine nine nine, that would land there. You're going to end up running off any small businesses that come in. If they see, if they have to go through...
So, cause Aldis is a small business?
It is. Aldis, you can't find Aldis in big cities, they come to the smaller...
But that's a, the, I just agree. Small business and a, and a, and a business that's small are two different things. But, but again, if Aldis wanted to come in and we wanted them to come in, if we could do a variance, then...
I feel that a variance is still going to come, anytime you're putting a business and having to get a permission in front of the city council, it becomes a negative.
The S U P will too, though.
Right, it will. That's why we were putting the S U P at, at a medium-sized business and above. So I, I, that would be a Stan question about a variance versus an S U P. Um, I, I, we looked at it, and did we want to go all the way up? Yes.
Well, my, my thing, though, is, is that, here we go, we just approved this comprehensive plan to bring in stuff to try and build Glen Rose, you know, economy.
But we love to build bespoke businesses. I mean, that, that's the difference. We were looking to bring in bespoke, locally-owned businesses to build the...
What size is British Act?
Uh, twenty-eight thousand. I think the largest we've got, probably.
And could you answer that question of, could we, again, the goal is for us to have, like you said, for businesses not to come in that we have no control over, and it wasn't a business that we wanted in, but we cast a wide enough net that we didn't get to have any say-so in it. But could we do a variance, just like we could waive permit fees or what have you? Could we, could we legally, because I do agree, S U P is a, I can't imagine anybody investing tons of money with the potential that we could yank it.
Well, keep in mind one other thing, so just for Stan to also comment on. An S U P is hard to pull unless you have conditions written into it. So an S U P with no conditions doesn't get pulled.
Okay, I'm just thinking for the business, it's something to give them more ground.
Yeah, I, I agree, but I'm just saying, I'm just saying, you need to understand that the, the S U P doesn't get pulled easily, so it's not a snap. You have to have a condition written into the S U P, and they have to break the condition.
But we are, while we go to Stan, we're letting Mr. Green just come in quickly, he's got a complaining zone as well.
All right, Les, Lee, it's that these folks have always come from variance wants. This gentleman here said you need to correct the ordinance. You don't need to be doing these variances.
You need to be doing what?
Variants.
Correct, correct, yeah.
And so that's what they're trying to do, and that's what we've been trying to do. So, you know, variances was what he suggested that you did not be, be doing.
Right, I'd rather, I mean, I'd want, again, I'd rather not.
That's what, what, Stan, what your thoughts are.
I'm sorry, I'm having a little bit of a hard time hearing you, but I, I, I guess the concern I have with granting a bear, or doing a variance is, is that implies you've got to show a hardship. Whereas an S U P, we could put criteria based on square footage or types of use. That's, that's more akin to what you would see in a zoning ordinance rather than a variance, because I would hate to limit it to having to prove a hardship.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Other questions?
I will say this, we originally started at the twelve nine, or at the twenty-nine nine nine nine. Then we moved it back, because we felt like there was a big gap at the eleven nine 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 to the twenty-nine nine 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 with a lot of businesses that may or may not be what we wanted it. So middle, middle ground. So anything less than a cer- a certain size, good, that is free and clear to come in without a problem. Anything over a certain size, and add, uh, we were doing this just on retail, remember? This isn't every single building, it's just on a retail center.
But we also need to remember that, just like you both said, we're trying to bring in small business owners, local, small business owners. Going through an S U P can be a little more expensive than...
Absolutely, is a local, small business owner going to be building a retail center at more than, or at twelve thousand feet or more.
What about that, you know, where Sundown Subs is? That, that's a whole...
Each one of those.
Center, so it's not, not that, I mean, even though it's all one building?
Well, that breaks down into smaller storefronts in that case. They're, they're leasing out, that would be a whole shopping center scenario, that would not fall under this.
So if I build a forty-five thousand square foot building, I could, I could put in eleven thousand five hundred of, of a shopping unit four times, right?
Yeah. Again, this is on, i- in theory, we need to fix our schedule uses for that. Because that would be a shopping center or a mall, that would not be an individual store. So, so where, um, the...
But, but I'm renting it as an individual store.
But it's about the building structure. It's about the building structure, not about... Every single line item on the schedule of uses has its own rule. But this is only about an individual building as a retail center.
So when you come in and go, "I want to do a salon," we look at, "How does a salon work?"
Right. A grocery store works differently than a retail...
Where is the strip mall to get in our schedule uses? It's not... But this isn't, this isn't applicable.
So, so like, only applicable to like a family dollar, a Dollar General, a, um, this would not be applicable to Aldis, because Aldis is a grocery store, and they have a different line item.
Got it. The, the building where the, sorry, guy that owns the family dollar?
The old family dollar.
Yeah. I, uh, couldn't tell you, I was talking my head.
It's under, yeah, it's under ten. It's not that deep. It's wide, but it's not that deep.
But again, they already...
Right, no, I'm just, I'm just looking at building size.
I understand.
Well, that's why, that's why I pulled Aldi up as an example of what twelve thousand square foot building.
Right, but Aldis falls under grocery.
I understand.
Yeah, I, yeah, no, I get you.
You're just saying perspective on size.
Just for visual, visualization aside, yeah, and they're small. Look, we went from twenty-nine, we, we originally proposed this item to be at twenty-nine nine nine nine, and it was through, right, honestly, me and everybody else talking back and forth that we dropped it. But there's middle ground. Pick a number in between. Say that you're, say that you're twenty-nine nine nine nine, and you're good.
S U P over eleven nine nine, you think, or over, over three thousand?
Just, just the way they're suggesting it, eleven nine 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 with an S U P.
I'm good with it.
And let's see if it actually is an issue.
Yep, and that's where we said, we can always come back and remove something if it becomes a problem.
Because we don't want to do a variance.
Right.
Yeah.
But we also just want visibility that that's something that big come in.
Now, I mean, that's your question, from what George, you said there. That was eleven nine nine without a S U P. Anything over that was with a S U P.
Yeah, correct. Twelve thousand, probably that big. Correct.
Twelve thousand and, you know, S U P. Over that, that's...
One hundred by one twenty.
So Dollar General, the new Dollar General, these two are the best.
Ten thousand something?
The Dollar General, ten thousand four hundred, I think, is what Joe said.
The fall, the family dollar that has been before you multiple times has not done anything yet. That's ten thousand four hundred.
I was just trying to get...
So we stepped with buildings, you're actually here, the new Dollar General is about ten thousand? No, it's bigger than that.
Bigger than that.
It's, um, I want to say, I looked at it, Orchard was twenty-eight.
I'm a, one of, we're...
On, on Austin Street. That was like twelve. It wasn't a lot bigger, but it was a little bit bigger.
Do we want to, like, maybe bump it some?
I make a motion that we move forward with this as it's written.
Second? I'll second. Hey, do you have a comment?
Well, the, what I was saying, and then she said in the middle of what I was saying, do we want to bump it up like a thousand square foot or something? do we want to bump it up like a thousand square foot or something, is that Dollar General is, don't you wanna have that Dollar General coming in? I mean, this is our thing, this is the conversation we had, we had the conversation of what size building do you want to come before, what business do you wanna come before council, have them ask permission, and then.
Can we go back to our second? Yeah, second one, please. I should only do that order.
No, you've got a, uh, yes, it'll be, it'll, it'll number passes.
Uh, or, we need, the, the motion will be for this number two zero two three dot zero five zero nine.
A, if approved.
The vote, the motion is, what were you, five zero, passes?
Thank you for connecting those dots for me, I go.
Uh, trust us, it took us a long time on this one, so I get it.
Thanks, Pam.
You're welcome.
Mr. Green.
Thank you.
Question, I'm sorry, next, next item, everybody ready?
Yeah.
Question, considering and possible action regarding a request, I'm, I've skipped one, consideration, possible action regarding changing the speed limits near Glen Rose Independent School District campuses, currently fifteen miles per hour. Everybody else here?
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, CJ Walker, that came, uh, was in, specifically, she was, I mean, in the school zone. If I'm the Mary Lynn.
Mary Lynn and, and, like, Allen to Stadium.
Yeah.
Um, those are the ones, I don't, but I know the others.
Yeah, and so, uh, if we were gonna do that before, I wanted to go and speak to, and, uh, uh, we had a meeting with different attendants, and Tommy, uh, they were in that meeting, okay, and we got very good support from the, uh, attendants about, we need to look at what the speed limits are right now. Uh, on Mary Lynn, it's fifteen miles an hour, three hundred sixty five days a year, all day long. That is very small, that's very low, okay? And, um, there are ways to control speed limits that, look at it from a timing standpoint in terms of when the most traffic is, certainly wanna look at it for school days, but in the summer, probably not as big an issue. And the reason we, uh, really were moving this issue up quickly is that our ardency is, uh, basically, um, is that we have to have a traffic study before we.
State Transportation Code, but not.
That's not our, okay, we need a traffic study to, uh, be able to determine what the traffic is coming, and so, um, given that, I talked to Buck, uh, about, does he know someone who does traffic studies? He recommended CJ Finch, name is called, Finch and the Soviets, they're in Irving, they serve all of North Texas, and, uh, spent some time on the phone with him, said, okay, what's the traffic study, you know, what do you do? And, most interesting, what did it cost? So, what they do, though, is they have two types of counters that they put down, either a tube or a radar, that they, and they make a decision. Uh, those counters cost a hundred seventy five dollars for a four hour period. What was to do is that we would come in, like on Mary Lynn, okay, we would put a counter on Mary Lynn and a counter on Stadium, because it goes past, so there's two counters there to get traffic on Stadium and Mary Lynn. Um, just to give that example, when she went through, they certainly wouldn't estimate the cost, 'cause they don't have anyone to look at, so, but I did get the cost of the individual, um, equipment they would use. On the intermediate and on the high school, you know, that, those are larger, larger, um, streets, and so, like Stadium, when it comes down off of sixty seven, another big street, I saw their radar on the tube, she was sure, yeah, okay, for all the same cars, so, what we're looking at is, let me say first of all, um, before we get into anymore, but we're looking at right now, if say we were to use two counters on, on the three locations, okay? Well, that's gonna be, um, up to almost twelve hundred dollars, plus it's gonna be some fees for installing the, I mean, they have to come out and do it. I think that the total cost for all three units would be somewhere around two thousand dollars. But for once, we would be able to have a, a verified study of what this traffic is, and what the citizens are traveling now. I don't know about you, but when I go fifteen miles an hour on Mary Lynn, I get fast. And I've only been here a month, so.
You said there's three sites, a Mary Lynn Stadium and West Maryland?
And intermediate, and the intermediate.
No, you mean the junior.
It's up for schools, yeah.
Oh, there's four.
You have the elementary, the intermediate, the high school, and the junior high.
The junior high, is, is this the junior high?
Sixteen two? Is, is there all two?
Okay.
Right up?
I would confuse, what are you?
About making fifteen miles an hour, twenty point seven.
Yeah, it, it needs to be, because people are.
But Mary Lynn already is, he just said, right?
They all are already fifteen miles an hour, all day, four hours a day, seven days a week.
Okay, so what are you trying to do?
Maybe where it's a school zone, when school is in.
Oh, she wants up the speed limit out of school, or?
Yeah.
Are you kidding me? Did you see how many people there are living in that?
That, that would break a lot of the.
Fifteen, people are not going fifteen miles an hour because.
Thirty five down the party, no.
But, well, thirty on the mark, but, um, it is, the people ignore the sign that says school zone because it doesn't have a time, and if we had the signs there that had the time, then it would be followed better, and. And we need the speed limit to be, I, which the count, we have to do the traffic study, I was thinking twenty five, not up to thirty, but twenty five, when there's no school, but we do have a representative from the school that lives here, 'cause we're also talking about a school zone on sixty seven, because there isn't one, and every other town that has a high school, that has a straight direct route to a major highway, has a school zone.
And I think.
And we need that for the safety of our children.
And I'm.
I agree with that.
And I noticed that when you come out of Stadium on sixty seven, there's, there's cars coming around very fast, and you're having, and it's hard to see, and, uh, you know, uh, if we have a sixteen year old that just got the drive, that's tough. I'm so shit.
Just over Ferris.
I don't have a question with, that's the junior high or anything like that, but Stadium Drive, I know in the summertime, y'all still have programs at the school, you've got training, you know, uh, football teams out there doing, you know, training and stuff, and I, that particular road, I think, needs to stay at what it is, because you still have a lot of kids, even during the summer, that are out there in the parking lot, or at the gym, or at the softball field, or out on the track, walking, you know, crossing over Stadium, I, I would not recommend changing the speed limit on Stadium Drive. Now, Mary Lynn, yeah, 'cause that's more of a residential area.
The school, he'll talk about it, you know, but they're asking for the ones with the flashing lights, so that when the lights are flashing, the school zone is in effect, so if they had extracurriculars that they needed the school zone to be in effect, then the lights would be flashing.
I'm talking about the summertime when they're not there.
If they had an extracurricular during the summer, the light could be flashing.
Would you like to, uh?
We have a quick question about the, about the time study, is just, um, would it only be during, like, are they gonna do a study that says, okay, here's what the traffic is during school, and here's what the traffic is in the evening, and here's what the traffic is on the weekends, would it be abroad, or would it just be?
I think they're gonna leave it there and it'll be for a full twenty four hours.
Yeah, but how do you know what the traffic is on a sun, like, a Tuesday?
Long, you only get one day, you get twenty four hour period.
Well, they can do it as long as you want.
If you wanna pay some more, George, you can pay some more.
Because that's what I'm saying, is the traffic would be significantly different on Thursday at two P M, and then it would be on Sunday at two P M, right?
And, and if we're gonna do it, we have to, of course, because it's almost out.
Right, yeah, we need it done during school.
At least once, that's not question, but then you don't, you often need them when there's no school, 'cause that's how you make the case of, hey, during school, there's a thousand cars, if there are not, still there's two hundred cars, that makes a difference.
From my first education living over there, twenty five would be too fast, and I think probably, twenty, twenty is maybe okay, but, I mean, you, you have, you know, like, right now, they have, uh, the flag football thing using the field, not a sanctioned school function, but probably should still be at a twenty mile an hour zone, if we're going to, if we're gonna have split.
Well, I, I will say, of everybody that I know and I have talked to, I am the only person to go fifteen miles an hour down all of those roads.
I go fifteen, because Missy was a retired teacher, so I go fifteen.
So you're the second person I know that is, I go fifteen.
There, there you are, you're three, that's the majority right there, so.
Exactly. Buck just has a really good potential for some revenue.
I, I had called Buck once, and I asked him, I said, Buck, it says school zone, school's not in session.
He said, it's all the time.
But I like it.
That's supposed to be minutes. So, um, the.
Buck's got some really revenue in there. Do we just do a traffic study, figure out what the numbers are, and then we can determine what to do from there, or there are no?
And, and we, we cannot change the speed, keep the speed limit there with the inclination of, here's some good revenue for the city, we can't do that, that's against law, that has been checked.
Now, to your point, you know, if we go ahead and do the traffic analysis, you'll get a report that shows how many cars, how fast they were going, and the time that they were going, that's what I understand reported, I talked to the.
And, do we have the other?
We have the representative.
Yeah, we're.
Oh, we'll, we'll support whatever y'all would like to, we see a problem with the same reasons, um, several of y'all said, people don't pay the fifteen miles an hour and, Buck's credit, he's done an excellent job, how many days he's been there, um, if y'all aren't in favor of raising the speed limit, we as a district would probably come to you and ask for speed bumps right around that arena area, uh, where most of our kids cross the roads from the high schools to the arena, uh, and ask for a, a speed bump, you know, speed hump, not a bump, but slow traffic down in that area. All fair, just, most of the people are pretty good in the morning about slowing down, when they see the kid, usually when the school lets out, there's a handful of kids crossing, you'll see somebody barreling down the road or fringe, uh.
What about those, what about those lighted signs when the kids in a crosswalk that's actuated, and then they're flashing?
Trying, trying to hurt two hundred kids in the one crosswalk.
Sure, yeah.
But, uh, no, I, I, I mean, we thought about the lighted crosswalks, of stop, stop, or, flashing lights, just to slow people down, we thought about the radar shooting at you when you come down the road, it's just fifteen, twenty, flashes at you, we're willing to do anything, and, you know, he came to us about the traffic study, we thought that was a great idea, you know, three thousand, or six thousand dollars, we're willing to chip in for the study, I mean, we're, you know, we're gonna be partners with y'all on this, and, uh, you know, I also brought up the concern that that thirty miles an hour down Mary Lynn may be.
No, that would be too fast.
Excessive, because we still have little kids working out of those softball fields, you know, over by your house, and, uh, it's too much, little kids run out the road or whatever.
Well, see, that, up where your house is, that's not even school zone, school zone is, um, down there.
Fifteen all the way up, fifteen all the way up to, to the, to the highway, because it's close, isn't it?
No, it's, no, it's, it's tiny, yeah.
Twenty, oh, hot dog. I mean, you're bad, no.
Right, so, we have a party, have to do a traffic study for your layout.
Right, we, we need, we need to do the traffic study, the school said they'll, they have, we have the money somewhere we can do this, but we just take care of it.
That's my Harris. Quick question, but, y'all typically patrol that area in non, non schools, I mean, y'all go up there and sit during the, uh, school zone area when school's out, or on the weekends?
They're directing traffic, swear.
But I'm talking about in the summer, are they going up to sit in the school zone to make sure people are going fifteen miles an hour?
I'll just tell you, I remember that was one of my first questions I asked Buck, 'cause I'm like, I don't understand what the speed limit is here, can you help me? Because it says school zone, and there's no, there's no school, and I, and I was like, I don't know, I'm, I'm. So.
I didn't matter if it separated from. The flashing lights on the school.
Uh, Tree Ledge is, I'm saying, are y'all still interested, that's standing there?
The arena park, you know, we, we need to come up with something at the arena, so many people, so many cars, you know, turning in every which direction.
But aren't we only talking about?
No, if, if we agree that, that we don't think that a single day study is beneficial, that it'd be more beneficial than a two day study, like on a Friday, Saturday, or a Sunday, Monday, so we're capturing a school day and a weekend day?
I think that Monday, Monday would be.
Monday, Monday?
Or, I don't, I mean, Friday.
Friday.
I think you're not getting through all.
Whatever CJ hits can, I guess you're right.
If Saturday, you're gonna hit more traffic.
Well, that's the point, is we wanna see a non-traffic day compared to a traffic day, right? 'Cause Saturday, because you wanna see what you, what you need when it's a non-traffic, if you're looking at what should the, what should the speed gonna be when there's traffic versus non, then you need to see what the non-traffic day looks like compared to a traffic day.
What if we get, um, the professional opinion from the people that are doing the study, what would be the best two days to do it?
Well, I think there's non-school days that still have a lot of activity to go.
Right, yeah, but even Friday, Saturday, Sunday.
And maybe a three day study, five, five.
Yeah, I'd do a Saturday Sunday.
That would be.
In the interest of time, because of school going out, have an idea of what we want to do, or ask, or do a study for three days, to, we'll go back and ask a question, we're another weekend.
Um, I, I would make a motion that we, um, do the two day study at whichever two days the company says is the best two days to do it, and get with the school, and what then the, the costs.
All in favor? Five zero, last? Thank you.
You bet.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, John. All right, item fourteen, discussion, consideration, and possible action regarding a request for a special alcohol usage permit for the Paloxi River pass.
I'm recusing myself, but Ms. Angell was speaking here.
Change the place for request, we're asking for a special use permit for the alcohol so that, um, our, our mint is stretching from essentially the dam to Heritage Park, and we're also having a stage at Sexton Mill, so it will extend down towards Sexton, and, uh, we want people to enter the square, all the shops on the square, so that's what we're looking for, so that people can enter around, um, because as you know, they, even though there is.
You're asking for permission to have open containers from Sexton, allowed to walk from Sexton?
No, at our, no, at, no, 'cause Sexton has their own alcohol permit, I'm talking about at the park, when people come and they have their cooler, things like that.
Okay, so it's, so it's BYOB, have it, that's, I'm just trying to get you to clarify for them.
Well, that was in my hand, yeah.
Yeah, wait a minute, so you just wanna allow alcohol to be consumed at Heritage Park, in, in Big Rock?
Yes, well, we're not, we're not, not.
Not at Big Rock, just Heritage Park.
Yes, we're from like, the dam down, the river.
But only BYOB?
Yes.
And so Sexton, if somebody went to Sexton?
No, that's the difference, they have their drinks up there, but I'm saying, so it's not that they all stay at Sexton Mill and hang out there, and versus the other things that we have.
Now you have a good explanation.
Now you have a good explanation.
They can have it, yes.
And and they can't cross the dam and walk over to Big Rock, it has to stay on the river walk.
Correct. And we're gonna have like cooler checkpoints, uh, so that everybody has to get a, like a tag, a band on their cooler so that we know it's been approved, yeah.
This sounds good, have you? Clear, I mean, not clear, but have conversations with Buck and with the sheriff.
They're working on that, but Hanes, Captain Hanes is on vacation right now. But we will also.
We'll have security.
We will have security, but we'll also have night security because of all the vendors there. We'll meet somebody there and watch the vendors. From, so stuff, yeah.
And so we're talking about a big, not a Big Rock, so will there be like a no alcohol permitted beyond this thing?
Like, we'll have uh, checkpoints on both sides.
Got it.
Will it go all the way to one forty-four or just to the park?
No, no, just to like um, the river walk.
From the river walk entry to Big Rock?
Okay.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Why wouldn't we have Big Rock then?
Cause we can't, huh, hold what's going on over at Big Rock.
This is what Dad says to that side.
So float as a float. Yeah. The point is to float, they can float the river right there, they get out of Big Rock, at the dam and come back up, and then they go back.
To the wheel, come back.
Got it, yeah. And and it's not a, does the river walk, it's river walk and Heritage Park.
Right, maybe the catfish could off at Heritage Park, but we really would prefer our people just from river walk entry to.
How does control the.
And would it be, would it be the river as well, like if they wanna float the river, and would it be no bottles?
Yes, no bottles.
I just wanna bring something up that y'all need to consider. Um, so years ago, don't own the property along, along that river. We have an easement, access easement from Helen Curly. It's, they have a contract, it's been expired for a few years now. Super, super sensitive to the the traffic along.
I've already talked to countrywide, yeah, and they're excited about it.
Yeah, okay.
Cause we will be closing off the street back there where that subdivision is behind the river walk. Uh, because we need it just to be banned and their trucks and stuff, but we will have people set uh, set at that gate so that people that are staying in Countrywood and people who live in that neighborhood can get in and out, so people they can park.
We don't have like.
But no, I don't remember parking.
Parking park if there and, yeah, anywhere else.
And you've already touched base with the people in that hood over there? So they're not in the neighborhood.
Hey, you know.
And this is not real, I mean, you've done this special alcohol use permit in the four, on the square for the wine walk. One's gonna be coming up for, or this is the good old boy.
No, this is the Plexi River Pass.
Well, okay, so there'll be another for the good old boy.
Is it normally the ones that you do on the square, or they buy the alcohol from one of the local bars and restaurants?
Yeah, and this is different than the B Y O B. Make the move to approve. For special alcohol use permit, Plexi River.
Okay. All in favor? Or one extension? Ask?
Thank you.
Okay. Item fifteen, discussion, consideration, and possible action regarding the city of Glen Rose's membership in text twenty-one.
So we did get a renewal for our tech Cleveland membership, it's due before October first. Reason I'll let you take it over whether you think it's worth it or not.
Okay. Um, yeah, so the text twenty-one, uh, part of renewal comes up in, I believe it's actually in October, they sent the um, they sent the notice of payment that if we wanted to put it into this budget year, we could, uh, and to pay the uh I I feel like it's a valuable organization for us, you know, in just the last, just the last four months, we got to talk with almost fifty legislators, legislators when they were in session uh, down there, and we were talking, you know, in four different settings. They set up the appointments, uh, we get thirty minutes, twenty-five minutes with the staff, and it's an opportunity, you know, kind of twist their arm about the things that are important to our community with an emphasis on transportation. But uh, you never know where an opportunity to pivot a conversation with somebody in Austin can lead you. And um, I I feel like it's a, I feel like it's a good organization, I feel like it's a worthwhile organization. They would like to try to recruit um, more communities along and try to make an Highway sixty-seven core the work focus.
That was our intention for joining.
Yeah, yeah, I I think that's the, I think there would, it would be a good opportunity to try to build that um, you know, build that coalition aspect to, and when you're working with and talking to Tech dot and other organizations, you know, that that kind of have a seat at the table. And uh, this organization for twenty-five hundred dollars gets us a seat at the table and gets us an opportunity to visit with a number of the uh number of our contemporaries who are working transportation issues.
How many of those uh, members are on sixty-seven? Cause I know that's actually text twenty-one set for Highway sixty-seven.
Yes.
So are we the only one?
That's that's just one of.
I know, but sixty-seven hasn't really been on their their radar. So I mean, is it gonna be up to us to go out and recruit other cities on Highway sixty-seven throughout the entire state to try and get a part of this uh text twenty-one thing or what? That's what I wanna know.
I I think they would, I think they would uh, you know, that that obviously they would, you know, appreciate our help to try to, you know, kind of get something like that off of the ground. Uh, but you know, they have the, you know, they have the contacts within their organization, you know, with the other people along the community. Uh, you know, I think that uh Martin Simmons there in Brownwood, I think sixty-seven has come back.
Right, Howard Payne.
Howard Payne, Howard Payne.
Martin Simmons and they have a ladder.
Howard Payne, his name, something like that. Um, I think that's, that stretches along sixty-seven. Um.
Three seventy-seven.
Three seventy-seven again?
Sixty-seven goes to Angelo.
Same Angelo?
Um, and sixty-seven.
Way to I T M, down in West Texas.
Yeah, sixty-seven goes all the way from Mexico, it, I mean, United States sixty-seven or Texas six, whatever. It's, it, it ends at the border, but that road continues into Mexico, and it goes all the way up to the Great Lakes. Um, and so it is a major, major thoroughfare, but if it is oh, it is going to really bring more stuff to us in the way of tourism and things like that, but it's what.
Does it, does it bring Glen Rose? Three seventy-seven? Would you say that even three seventy-seven, although that's not on uh, that as they make an emphasis or focus on three seventy-seven, tangentially that affects us in a way?
Yeah, because we are in the um, the, there's the shaded areas with three seventy-seven, yeah.
Do you agree with that?
Yeah, I think there's, I think there's certainly an opportunity to try to build, you know, build our own coalition, you know, reach out to people in Cleveland that we know. Ask them to come, you know, join the organization. Um. I I think it's a, it's a good opportunity, and it's a good organization.
It gets our feet in the door with the different legislative office also. They, they see George or I, whichever one. It's George, I don't like awkward. But they see our face, they hear Glen Rose, they get to.
Every, every one of them, you know, I made a point to try to, you know, talk to them about our, our legislative fix on our annexation um, solution, just so that they were aware of it. Wouldn't have had that opportunity had I tried to set it up myself, to do that kind of legwork for us. Okay, any other comments?
I make a motion that we renew our membership in text twenty-one.
Second? All in favor? Or, or one against? Ask us? Okay, item sixteen, discussion, consideration, and possible action regarding a resolution changing the May twenty-third, two thousand twenty-three regular city council meeting date.
We don't need to do this now, right?
Unless y'all want to.
Tech dot changed their date.
Yeah, yeah, the reason was they changed it to the twenty-fifth, twenty-fifth.
Twenty-third, oh, okay, yeah.
We did that on no action taken?
I have Joe.
Kate Walker?
She said, isn't this a no action I've to get? She said, I'm trying to do the gift, help Joe.
Thank you. I heard my name and I.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm trying to give her a note. Give you assistance on how to do it.
I'll use you anytime I can. Item number seventeen, discussion, consideration, and possible action regarding bids to replace the flooring at City Hall.
Well, we um, should receive three bids to replace the flooring at City Hall. There is some error in my math for the flooring interior side of the bill. But regardless, um, springtime flooring was the low bidder by two hundred and some change. Summerable flooring was the next lowest bidder. Our financial policy does allow the council to take into consideration the impact on the local economy when choosing a vendor. So um, my recommendation would be to go with summerable flooring since they are located in Summerbell County. Instead of springtime flooring from Springtown, but y'all can do whatever y'all would like.
Kate Walker?
Um, did you find out about the, where they've gone in here to pull the floor, was that pull and reset?
Yes.
Just for clarification, what, is it the entire?
The entire building.
Okay, nothing's gonna be left off?
Nope, the entire building.
Thank you. For discussion, have you looked at any of the pieces, the material, you like it, comfortable with it?
Yeah, so uh, it'll be, except for in the council chambers, it'll be twelve by twenty-four porcelain. Access split, all the companies recommended for commercial porcelain tile instead of ceramic. And then in the council chambers, we'll just replace the carpet, just the echo and the sound.
Yeah.
And it's not as high traffic in here, so, but everything else will be that, twelve by twenty-four.
Area?
I'll have good neutrals, so we can, we can change things soon.
Pretty uh, discussion with summerable flooring, I always had like uh, they're like them preferably, but has there been any discussion with them to uh what the cost at all, two hundred bucks to to kind of go right in line with Spring to, or Spring down?
There is not, but usually I've bid. But I, I.
Understand, just.
I could.
A motion that we go with summerable flooring.
All of us in favor, going with summerbell for the new flooring, five zero, pass. Moving along, discussion, consideration, and possible action regarding the creation of a development director position and other matters related thereto.
So we've been talking about this for a while to catch um, some folks up. We're looking at creating, and Councilmember Harris and I worked as well with Pam Street, to look to create a position that would help um, with economic development and beyond. Um, we've looked at existing positions, and then Councilmember Harris has, with some of his book friends, she helped come up with, what should we call it? Because I didn't have exactly that. But essentially, we just approved our, our comprehensive plan today, and this role would help to execute on that, that plan. An example, I just had a developer asking last week, hey, do you guys have empty buildings? What kind of things do you wanna get built here? We're interested in developing here. We need somebody who would have, hey, here's all the buildings, we have to work with property owners to say, what is it you're trying to do with the property that you have? And to work with developers to help bring in, not just any business, but we, we know businesses can come in whether we like it or not, if we meet, if they meet our expectations. So if we have somebody that's out there proactively filling the spaces that we have, instead of it just kind of being filled with whatever comes in. What comes to mind is citizens who lack water, right? They want a water park. So perhaps somebody who their job is to go find us a water park. So this will be someone to help us in shepherding the development part of our comprehensive plan and partner with developers. Um, we have an org chart in here, I know we have talked back and forth about where it would sit, so we have it as it is right now, but I'm totally open to changing it in whatever you guys recommend. But ultimately, um, this person would work really closely with our C D D in, in working with, okay, what are visitors coming to see? So what are things that we could do to help increase tourism, but then also our comprehensive plan? What do our citizens look for? And then obviously, our building official would work with them kind of once the ball gets rolling on, okay, now this is and now they're gonna work with us, help. Um, so it certainly is a position that we, we could have benefited from having it already. There's been several issues that have presented themselves where if we had somebody who was kind of out there proactively helping to meet our city needs, it could have helped. It could have helped either get somebody inside of the city limits instead of outside of the city limits, help our property owners develop the properties that they have in a way that um, that's suited for our number one industry in the city limits, which is tourism, but also to meet the needs of our city residents. So I'd look to fill this position. I know we have a lot of other appropriate positions now. I don't think anything mutually exclusive. I'll hire whoever will come in that is the right person to fit. And if we have our city administrator that's the right one first, we hire that one first. If we don't have one, but we have a building official, we hire that. I don't think we have to stack rank them in importance, let's just find the right fit, and whomever is the right fit in whichever order that comes in. I I'd like to move forward with this, especially I think now they have a game plan, here's, here's our, our comprehensive plan, and here's what we need you to help.
I agree, we need this position, but I think because it's gonna be under the city administrator, I think we need to hire a city administrator first, because this is gonna be something where they need to be able to work together. Each other as well as a building official. I don't think we actually have to have building officials hired first before this one, but I think we definitely have to have a city administrator hired before we even work on a home.
So we have Jim here, right? And we have Buck here. These are the employees that are here when they get hired. And so when you get hired, you have the staff that you have. I mean, ideally, I would love to go building official, I mean, city administrator first and then but, but the reality is they're gonna be hiring a staff of V R, there's V R director, I'm sorry, there's direct reports here right now that they're going to work with the folks that are hired here, and so if we don't get a, a city administrator for three months, six months, whatever the number is, I don't wanna hire a city administrator just to get the position filled, we wanna be particular with that. But I also don't wanna lose on a, if there's a good opportunity, again, it's not a rush, if we get a bad, if we don't have a good batch to choose from, then we don't fill it. But what if there is somebody who would be perfect, but they take another job three weeks before, before we post this position? So, I mean, there's the ideal, but then the reality is every one of these positions that the city administrator is going to have to have as a direct report is already gonna be here when they get here.
We've already turned this down three, two times now.
Yep.
Um, we need to get the staff we need in place before we do this.
So this is about what we need?
This is a position that we need to fill at this time. Um, there's other, there's other entities that can help if somebody wants to develop. They, they can get with villagers, they can get with, they can talk to Kelly, they can talk to, they can get with administrator, but we need to put this, put this away for now and concentrate on city administrator and possibly the building official, because those are, those are departments that we are lacking in right now. We have a great interim city administrator, I'm not talking about you, I'm talking about permanent city administrator.
But these aren't exclusive of each other, we can't not hire administrator, we can't have, only have one posting out, we're only allowed to have one posting. We can have a posting, a, a job posting out for everybody.
This is one we don't need to, um, we, we don't need to be revisiting this again. I would prefer to wait for this budget season when we just work on that budget again.
It's already budgeted.
I would like to see it again, because I think we've been taking some money from that in order to get this and that.
Right, but we.
I would revisit it at the budget season, and I'm not saying we don't need it, but I'm saying right now, we need to get our, our, I mean, uh.
I, I totally hear what y'all are saying. I see no reason why one impacts the other. Like, why we couldn't hire a building official because we had already hired this person. I, I don't see a dependency, um, ideally, but yeah.
If anybody's all got your opinions, do you wanna? Motion?
You must make a motion on it, Madam.
Yes, you are.
You are?
I make a motion that we, we, right? I make a motion that we, um, do, create a job posting for the development of director position.
I'll second, and I'll tell you why, because I think that, uh, you know, we have, we've had a hard time finding, you know, applicants for the positions that we've had open already. I think Ms. McKethan may have some ideas about how we're going to, you know, fill a building, building official's position, um, you know, that, that may not be our first best choice, but it may be the option that we, you know, ultimately settle on. And I, I just think that, you know, given the opportunities for development that we have coming into the community, we need to, I think we need to move forward with it. I don't think we can expect you to have to do that work for us. I think that's unfair for you.
Kate, have you heard this thing, Tom? Here, we have a second.
Uh, you know, I sold real estate. You, you looking to just make a sale. They're not, they're not looking to try to, you know, backfill communities or, or take a, you know, vacant building and try to figure out how to turn it into something for us that fits within the comprehensive plan. Now that we have a comprehensive plan approved, we kind of have some guidelines, we know what we think we want to, to be moving forward, then it's, it's time to start moving forward.
Okay. Do you, do you know what the, and I don't, because I don't recall what was the, the budget, what the, color range was?
I believe it was, and I'll say, I could be slightly wrong, but I believe it was like all in everything, benefits, all of that was one hundred thousand. Now keep in mind, that money was budgeted in October.
Sure.
We haven't spent.
Right, right.
Sixty or seventy thousand of that. So while the budget has been impacted and we use some of that money, we haven't used enough of that money.
Forty thousand, thirty thousand at this point, right? They have a motion, it's second? All in favor? All opposed? Two? Okay, consent agenda. Uh, number nineteen.
No, he'll go at one.
Okay.
Can I go?
They'll go at one, unless someone wants to.
All agenda? Those separate discussions, these items, council member request, anything we would have considered separately?
Question, like, that's a question.
By council member Walker? All in favor? How's it go fast?
And for the record, those resolution numbers are R dash twenty twenty-three dot zero five dot zero nine A for First Financial Bank and B for Interbank.
R dash twenty twenty-three.
Dot zero five, dot zero nine, A and B.
Okay, the staff reports. Forward? I don't have any, uh, questions, if I have any.
Yeah, I just gotta get.
Anything moving over there? Beyond what, I mean, the, the wall, the, the wall, the portion of that?
Where are you talking about?
Rock Ridge.
Okay.
They've got plans on site, and they've got a crew that's going by the plans. Um, rocking materials are there, make calls for inspections, they're doing everything. Good job.
Um, my question for you was, when we got something, I mean, the four of us know where Rock Ridge is, um, but we have to move here.
Right across crackers.
Yeah, but, but there's other, um, areas, Rosewood Edition, is there a way that you could put in there, like, where these are at? Because you can't pull up Rosewood Edition online and find out where it is. Rock, Rock Ridge, you could, you know where it is, and you could put the crossing crackers in line, or, you know, Rosewood, I, I don't know where that is. Agent, out there by.
That doesn't mean it's in the.
By, um, Rainbow Post Office, whichever, I don't remember what the name is called out there. But if you could put something, a, a directive in there, it would really help us. Where is Rosewood?
Other River One.
That's the one across that's gonna be blocked off at the River One?
River River One.
In the dark area.
Rosewood. Uh-huh, River One. The way that you're gonna block in.
Okay, there we go, thank you.
No, if that was just happened, you could put something like that, it would be appreciated. It's a nice position, you know, be in there every time they take off.
Ms. Meso? Police chief report, Ms. Martin?
I don't have any bad. Is the county thing all good? I'll send to you. Report, yes, I'm sorry.
Tropical report, the chart that we had.
I, it's, it's not liking me, so I just need to rebuild it, yeah.
Okay, you got, okay, let me know if you need help.
Okay.
So can you just talk through the, the, this zirker system that we've got in the vehicles now? Uh, just cooperation, how's that all work?
Of course, the sheriff's department, uh, allow me to, to work with them. Over this ago. They dispatch, they would run, Austin plates, uh, driver's license, um. Right, the sheriff's department does a report on that. Fire some cops and. Broke from there, do house watches. That's what we need. Come here with, uh, they dispatched us to a call, get on there and look, get more detail and get.
It was better communications with the county.
That's, that's what puts out the.
I'm assuming.
It comes from like.
So, do you have, did you email that copy? Because I don't have that.
I did, we got it.
I, I sent it to Stacy and after to send it to everybody. Did you not get it?
He has it, you know, he has.
I have it now, I have it now, I have it now, thank you. All right, just, just for clarification, this comes from them, right?
Comes from the sheriff's.
And you guys input all of the, all of the calls and all of the, so all of these callouts?
They do all that.
They do all that?
Yeah, we can just get on there and look. Only thing we get in the internet is. And sometimes we don't know, so we can often.
All end of them to say, we're at such and such house, student house watch on such and such, whatever.
Right.
And all that gets logged.
Allison, did you have a?
Um, mayor, can I speak from here?
Sure.
Um, uh, mayor, council, I just wanted to, um, add that I met with the sheriff today, and he said he really appreciates all the assistance and the, the extra work that, you know, Jesse or doing. Any duties, from house watch to, um, from Jim. Yeah, so, uh, he, he just said, he, he said, he's seen a big difference, and, uh, and he's had great input from the staff.
When you're reading this report, it's eight hundred and eight oh one, right?
Eight oh two.
Eight oh two.
Eight oh two.
Your eight hundred. Or the eight, eight oh two. But Jesse, the four hundred, you know, share call or pick the call.
Very good, thank you. Thank you, Chief Martin. Uh, who's doing the planning, building the planning report?
There was a correction, uh, Jody gave y'all, uh, the sheet, the, the total wasn't adding up, but.
Work?
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm. Do y'all have a corrected copy?
Do you happen to know if the, like, um, the declines over, specifically with inspections, has she shared, is that related to staffing, or is that related to everything costs so much?
It's everything costs so much.
Yeah.
I, I can tell you, she and I have talked about it.
Perfect.
It's because the staffing isn't creating, uh, an issue of getting inspections, inspections can happen. It is a request for inspection. There's also been a few places that have a full. Right, and they, they are in. That stuff that Chris. Some of it is, some of it is going, um, to Stan.
Yes, I know that.
Okay. Hold. Goodbye.
Well.
You got.
Y'all have it, yeah, y'all have any questions about it, though?
Now that I know, I will do that.
I'll make you, I'll do Jody, you do Christie.
There you go.
No questions.
Yeah, Christie's out.
I will make my comment on Christie's behalf. On Saturday morning, I woke and there was a, unfortunately, a dead animal in my street. Called her, and she was working Saturday, and she called me back right away and said, if you could make it and leave it at the shelter, that would be great. The big animal. She was working even.
I have one question, and Jim can probably answer it for me. The, um, eleven hundred college, because there's a, um, a code enforcement report, and it's where you can't see to make a turn. Is that where you're coming from? I'm, I'm, don't ask me, I'm still.
I know where it's.
You're leaving the hospital, you're going towards the street, and then on the other corner.
You're, you're going towards, um.
Oakdale.
Oakdale Park, and, and.
Claywood.
Yep, okay. If you're, if you're in a picture, you couldn't see.
The, the reason I was asking, we've talked about that one a year ago. You have to pull into the middle of the street. So this is, okay.
They have got it somewhat better, but it's still not. If you, I mean.
Awesome.
But if you're working on it, do you know?
We'll work on it.
Will you work on it?
I'm in the right way.
Yeah.
Okay.
Perfect, thank you.
Convention and visitor's bureau director report.
Questions, or?
The picture of your, um, your booth looks awesome.
Yeah.
I like the way you did that, looks good.
You made it into multiple different. I did that for you, George, so you could see the, uh, clip on there.
I did, I saw the clip, I was like, hey, look at there.
And she sent me, I know it's letting you know it's gonna be a clip.
Didn't know if you knew.
Thought I'd let you know.
Didn't know if you knew.
Uh, three point seven, did we change with that name, or did we change? No thanks. I thought I heard good times or something.
It's a good boy. Look at that old boy. We changed two letters.
Oh, okay, all right.
Thank you.
Everything else looks the same.
All right, let's move on. City secretaries report.
Not much, other than what's in there. In line. It's the, it's the design where it's in line to take care of it, so.
City administrators report?
I, um, now, this time I did have a whole week that I could put in, you know, for April.
You did a good job.
So it is a, it is a complete report. Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm open to, to comment, this is what I normally do on my clients, you know. So I, uh, for that meeting.
That's been very informative, thank you.
And you keep us updated weekly, I, you do, appreciate it very much.
What was most exciting about this is all your talking to, like, it's met with this person, met with it, because that's, that's what we need, is that kind of, yeah, and the talking to folks, and the getting together, and the understanding, it's gonna take lots of conversation, but it's like every other one of these guys, if somebody you met with the other.
I hope that Wayne and I are in the same team.
Yeah.
It's all here. Yeah, it's all here, yeah.
To reiterate.
She's been a big help.
To reiterate very well, council member Walker said, just appreciate those weekly reports, nice to see you.
And, and I will review the other reports and make sure they're available and, you know.
Stacy, can we go into executive session?
So, mayor and council member report.
Mayor, council members reports.
I'm gonna ask you guys, so in talking with Rich, we were talking about mayor pro temp, okay? And then he was like, what else? And I'm like, oh, actually, the text twenty-one, George, and, and DJ, and he was like, is there a list of all the different activities that everybody's working on? And I'm like, no, I think it's like in our brain. So I'm gonna put something together and then. Yeah, right, so I'll throw it together and send it to Stacy, and then Stacy, he'll send it out to everybody. And then if there's something you're working on right now that you were like, hey, I'd like to hand this off, or I've been doing this for a while, just, if you'll, we'll put that in the email so that it's an opportunity to kind of.
And, and if we're the one of y'all like to drive to Austin, be downtown Austin, Rich, go. If you're the one of y'all like to go to Austin, you can be the backup, because I, I don't drive in Austin.
So, speaking of which, um. I remember Colorado and myself went down yesterday to Austin for House Bill thirty-one twenty-four, was that right? Is that right?
For a house, for a bill.
For a bill. And it was, uh, and her speaking, number one, was very well done, and got major props from our senator, and, uh, it looked great, so. Thank you for letting me tag along, let, let me go with you, and it was very eye-opening.
Oh, great.
Should I talk about the next steps?
Um, well, as it turns out, one of the senators that was there is, uh, let's just say I got some unexpected pushback, and we later learned that that pushback was not particularly about our item as much as it was the dynamics of, of, of the, the guy. And so, um, so, and that's because we asked, and we think it was gonna make it through consent agenda, because there was a possibility that, with no opposition, it could just go through with a consent agenda. He wasn't confident that that would happen, given some of the dynamics between them, but he didn't seem to have, there was no, um, frankly speaking, the senators' points of question were, were off, um, and he was thinking we could still, um, ann it, involve it here. So I had the pleasure of trying to tell the senator that he was wrong without saying, you're wrong, um, which was, which was a landmine, um, but because of, because of that tension, we don't know if it's gonna be able to move through in a consent agenda item, but, um, but there didn't seem to be concern that it would. Particularly because of, you know, we literally have a developer who's looking at things, and they, they may have to do two, four, six, twelve, um, parcels, and, and it's, it's to no one's benefit when everybody's in agreement. So, it, it seems like it only forward, it's just forward in the consensus. We got to go first and set a lot. Big difference.
Can we go to executive session? Now, we'll move to the, to executive session at seven thirty-eight?
So, can we have a quick session?
Sure. Two minutes.
That'll work.
You just give me an image, I don't want you to.
Coming without knowing may have broken. Section five five. Celebrate the appropriate evaluation. Celebrate the appointed evaluation, this, uh, this, 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 of a public officer employee, to the city administrator.
Perfect.
Yeah, and let's go back if you want, or, or. And although they're lame to pin it. One, two, three. Typical, beautiful.
Stacy, I was looking at the agendas on the calendar, the twenty-third meeting is not on there.
You're the new staff operator.
On.
On our web pack, on our web pack on your report.